Well, it's a little after five, so I'd like to call the meeting to order. Thank you for coming to the work session tonight. Mark 16. First discussion topic we have is for an update from Aaron to tune in on the dredging of the canal.
Good.
Some really bad feedback here. Could everybody mute themselves who's not speaking, please?
Good afternoon slash evening, Mayor Moore and members of the board. Happy to come in front of you tonight to update you on the Moneyball Canal dredging. If possible, may I get a screen share permission? Because I have a PowerPoint I'd like to put the, to show the board.
Yeah, Aram is a, you're a panelist now, so you have the ability to screen share.
I'm still disabled, Liz, if you can give me some permission.
And let Brian into the meeting, please, too.
There we go. Okay, everybody got the full screen share?
Yep.
Okay, great. Okay, so just, you know, a quick refresher as to what we're talking about. This is the area of Moneyball Canal that we're concerned with in our dredging project. You may recall that we had a hydrographic survey that went all the way out past the Marina into Moneybug Bay. But we found that those water depths out there met, all met the standard, and we didn't need any dredging. So it was all confined to the area from the Stevens Lane Bridge north to the end of the canal. Here's just a quick summary of where we are. So the hydrographic survey was completed in 2020. It showed that we had less than 2,000 cubic yards needed to be dredged in three areas north of the Stevens Lane Bridge. So that was actually pretty good news because it's not that much sediment and it's all concentrated in three spots. The sediment sampling was completed this past November. That, in that, I'll go into the details of that, but in essence, we sampled those three areas that needed dredging. We found that 90% of the material in that, in those three areas is greater, is more than 90% is sand. And that, that material contained less than 5% total organic carbon. These are the thresholds that the BEC uses to determine whether or not you need additional testing. And since we don't, and as a result, we do not need additional testing, and as I'll discuss later, it's a huge money saver. And then moving forward, our next action would be the preparation and submittal of the permit applications. And I'll describe in some detail what that involves. Just again, an overview of our project. This is the area of, let me annotate this a little bit. Nope, doesn't let me do that. Okay. So we have the area north of Stevens Lane Bridge. You can see we have the three areas identified. Nobody can read that, so I zoomed in. The first area is right here in the first couple hundred feet south of the head wall of the canal where the drainage structure from Main Street enters. The second area is just here opposite the portside condominium. You can see it's just two small areas. And then the third area is here, just to the north of the Stevens Lane Bridge in front of the West Hampton Landings and the Harbor House. So those are the three areas. Here is the grain size analysis information. So I zoomed in on one of these reports, which I'll spend some time describing. And then I'm going to show you a whole bunch of results that you're not going to be able to read, but they're all good news. So when we do a grain size analysis report, we, first thing we have is, you know, who's doing it? Where it's coming from? And the ID number from the lab, as well as the sample ID number, which is something we give to the lab when we collect the sample. And so we're looking at the grain size in millimeters. And that gets all run over to here, and it's subdivided into gravel, sand, silt, and clay. And the object is, we want to have greater than 90% sand. And the reason for that is that sand does, things like heavy metals don't adhere to sand. The heavy metals and the petroleum stuff adhere to fine-grained materials like silt and clays. And so the BEC standard is, if you have greater than 90% sand, they don't need to sample for anything else because it's very unlikely it's going to be there. So I got to tell you, I was surprised. I didn't think that we would get results this good, and I'm real happy about it. So this was sample number one. We did six samples, two in each of the three areas. Here's area one. Again, nobody can read it, but obviously I'll be providing hard copies to the office. And this is the tabular results, and this is a graphical result. You can see it's certified by the lab director. And Long Island Analytical is a New York State certified lab, so we can rely on their results. So this is sample area one, sample area two, sample area three. The important thing is that all the curves all look very much the same. This one's a little bit different, you'll notice. All those curves look very much same, except for this last one, but that's only because it's got more, more gravel in it. So we're pretty happy about that because that's a heavier, heavier size. So again, greater than 90% sand, very good news. This is what we call total organic carbon. Again, the reason the BEC wants to look at this is that this is where you find, you find the pollutants tend to bind to the carbon. And if you have less than five milligrams per liter, which we do, we're in great shape. So again, all these samples passed that standard. And as a result, the six samples collected are greater than 90%, less than 5%. No further analysis needed. Saves the village thousands of dollars. Each one of these, if we had to do additional sampling, it's about $1,000 a sample. So you're looking at about $6,000 in, just in laboratory fees because, because of what we found in our sampling. So that's great news. So the next step is, we're ready, we're ready to go, ready to submit, you know, prepare and submit the applications. We have in hand the materials necessary to prepare and submit that. We think it'll take us 30 to 60 days to put those materials together and get them ready for submittal. There's likely going to be a public notice requirement, which is going to add, you know, a month or two to the process. And then the agencies are going to take six to 12 months to, to, you know, go through their processing. There's no red flags here. This is a product area that's been dredged in the past. We meet the standards. It's really basically getting the material that they need to support issuing a permit. And, and then comes the dredging, which we haven't really talked about too much. But the important thing to understand about the dredging is that there's a restriction from, there's an allowable window that is, goes from October 1st to December 31st of any year. So we need to align our permits with the next available window, which is probably not going to be in 2023 or probably be in 2024, unless somehow we get lucky over the summer and we get our permits issued earlier. And that's, so that's where we are. Right from my perspective, it's a lot of good news.
Aram, that is good news. It's really good news. What, what can you tell us about once the dredging occurs? Where do we have to, do we have to put the spoil, the dredge spoils somewhere to drain before we take them off the property?
Yeah, that, that is, there's two ways of doing this. One is to do it from a barge mount, and the other one is to do it from a land mount. The first area, let's just zoom back to the three areas. So the first area here, I think it's going to be, we're going to be able to get this from the shoreline with what we call a long-reach excavator. And that material, there's two ways to handle that material. One is to de-water it on site. The other one is just to put it into watertight trucks and haul it away immediately. You know, the fact that we're going to be dredging in the winter as opposed, or in the fall, rather, as opposed to the summer or spring means that we, if we, if there's an economy to de-watering on site when it comes to the contractor, then you have the parking lot and the ability to do that. There's no damage that would occur to the parking lot. And I mean, this is, they're putting material down and putting material up. It's, that's kind of a standard thing. Really, at, at the end of the day, it comes down to economies based upon how the, you know, the equipment the contractor has and how they want to execute the work. So that's really something that comes down to when put together a plans and specs package and how the, how the contractors respond to that. The second two sites are a little bit different because there's no easy way to get to them from the land. And I should point out that, that this, this, the first site at the, the north end, you know, contains 800 cubic yards. Almost 50% of the material that's going to be dredged is going to come out of this one area. The second two areas don't really have that kind of access, so it's going to have to be some type of a barge mount. And the problem or the challenge, I will say, with the barge mount is it's got to get underneath the bridge. So that again comes down to availability of equipment and what, what each individual contractor has. And then again, even if it is barge mounted, it could always be barged right back to this area and then offloaded right there. You wouldn't have to take it too far away. But at the end of the day, all the material is going to have to go to an acceptable upland landfill. It's, it's all considered inert matter, so you don't, there's no special requirement. We just need to have a, you know, a location that's been approved by the BEC, and there are dozens of them in the area.
And the bid spec, something that your company does for us?
Yeah, that would be, after the permits are, are issued, we, we would prepare the plans and specs package for the village. And we typically wait, obviously, until we have the permits in hand because if there are special conditions that will change the cost, we want to make sure we know about what they are.
Okay.
Confirm, I had one question early on when we were talking about this, and you assured me. I just want to confirm that that's still the case, that there's no threat to the existing bulkheads of further threatening their integrity?
Yeah, if you, yes, we did discuss that. And if you look on these cross-sections here, you can see that the, the dredging itself, the channel itself is about 25 feet away from the closest bulkhead on either, on, on the east side. And that, and this is all the way up at the head of the canal where all that bulkhead is all being replaced now. So, and it's, I know that the sheets are driven to a depth far below where we're going to be dredging. So I'm very comfortable with that. And then as you move farther to the, to the south, the distance from the bulkhead actually increases to it's, it's more than 25 feet away. So that gives us high confidence that there won't be any collateral damage.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Aram, you know, I suppose the biggest reason to dredge is, what's going to happen is to get rid of the sediment and open up the canal. But I was a little surprised that we don't need to do it down by the, you know, where the kayaks and paddleboards are just further south. I mean, I suppose it's good news that we don't have to, but you know, it's not all that. Sometimes the water isn't pleasant there. So I mean, what, is there a solution to that? I mean, I know that with all the Main Street improvements and with the sewers going in, it's going to have a huge impact. But I wonder if there's something else we can do also?
Yeah, we could, we, we can plant an oyster bed down there and let the oysters filter the water. In fact, the substrate there is perfect for an oyster bed. It's a nice, it's a nice, heavy sand. And, you know, you guys, you guys are helping generate a couple hundred thousand oysters every year in the Marina. There's no reason that we can't put a oyster bed right down that, in that area because it's all, right now, it's all water quality. And, you know, the, the way, you know, you've got to treat water quality. To improve water quality, you have to do it in three different ways. You have to cut off the source of pollution. You have to treat the water that's already in the groundwater and headed towards the bay, and you have to treat the water in the bay. And oysters are the best way to treat the water in the bay. You know, once you plant them, they work for free.
Yeah. 50 gallons of, what is this? 50 gallons a day per oyster?
That's right. You passed the test, Mayor.
The other thing we talked about, and that's a good idea too, Aram, and you know, we should talk to the Maritza Bay Project about that. But the third thing is, we did mention before about an aerator at the head of the canal, which is, you know, we, we have anticipated doing something by pulling the electric through the parking lots now that are under reconstruction, so we could have that option. But, you know, how, what would that look like and what would be needed for that?
Well, yeah, I do recall that conversation. I think, you know, Brian pointed out that, you know, these aerators are reasonably inexpensive and, you know, easily deployable. And to the best of my knowledge, they don't need to be permitted in any way. So really would want to look, you know, and, and the purpose of an aerator is to put oxygen into the water column. And I can tell you that in the summer, that's going to make a huge difference because what happens in this canal in the summer is that the, when the water gets hot, its ability to hold oxygen is decreased. And also you don't have, because it's the head of a canal, you don't really have through flushing. You just have the water coming back and forth. So that is going to be a way that you can really improve water quality in the summer. And it's just a question of, you know, you know, looking at, you know, how much oxygen that you, you know, it's basically you're just taking air and pumping it from the bottom up. And, you know, just like an aerator in a fish tank, literally.
Yeah. I wonder if that won't have any impact on the, the small boats that pull in? Or we would have to have it at the head of the canal where the boats wouldn't get to it?
You know, you can deploy them very, you know, they can sit right on the bottom or you can deploy them right along the, right along the bulkhead so that they're not, they're not a problem for, for boaters. Very common to have them.
Mayor, with air, with aeration, as Aram just said, there, there are two different types. There's kind of a subsurface option, which is what Aram's referring to, or a surface option. Surface would be like a fountain or some sort of decorative display. Subsurface is like, if you've ever seen in a fish tank, those little, from, from the bottom of the fish tank, the little bubbles that come up. That would be a subsurface aeration system that could be, that could be used here at the head of the, of the canal. And it's really just a compressor pump that sits outside of the water, can be placed anywhere. It's very small and very quiet. And it pushes oxygen through what's called an airstone, or a series of airstones that sit on the bottom. And it pushes oxygen into the water column, as Aram said, which is really what you're trying to do, which wouldn't get in the way of anything.
Thank you, Brian. So that sounds like a different contractor. We'd, we'd do that after the canal's dredged, and we'd have to get someone to do that installation?
Yeah, yeah, and possibly not even, you know, to be totally honest, I think our DPW guys could do it. I mean, it's, it's, it's really a very simple, simple installation. Anyone can do it.
Well, we have three-step phase here to help a healthy canal, so that's great. Well, Aram, I don't, you know, I don't have the paperwork from the last time that we retained you. I don't know if it included past what you've already done, but if, you know, you need to propose something for submitting the applications, let me know, and I'll circulate it to the board.
I actually was reviewing the contract right before our little chat here. And we are, it, it's phase two of our, of our contract is to prepare and submit the applications.
Okay, and that was approved already, phase one and phase two?
I'd have to ask Liz to confirm that for me, but that was our original proposal.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions for Aram?
No, all sounds very good. Thank you, Aram.
Thank you, Aram. Thanks, Aram.
Great, and thank you, and I look forward to seeing you all at the St. Patrick's Day Parade on April 2nd.
Yep.
We'll be there. Thanks.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Liz, we'll just have to check that tomorrow to see, you know, what the scope was of the first, you know, if we sign the contract for both phases or not, and then get back to Aram.
I'll pull it out tomorrow and look.
Thanks. All right, the next item on our agenda is a proposal that Brad prepared for us to consider with respect to a code change with front porches and chimneys. So Brad, would you please introduce this for us?
Sure, so we had a request to look into some permitted encroachments with respect to porches. And so did up a memo because there are some things that currently are, been interpreting as such. And so like what we usually do, if we're going to open the code and look at it, try to, you know, tackle a few things at the same time. So the section in front of you is 19736, so that exists within the zoning. Right now, it's just about roof overhangs. You may remember, we spoke briefly about this in May of 2020. There, you know, roof overhangs not exceeding 12 inches is what our code says. You don't get into it. But for our wind zone, it, it seemed more appropriate to be 24 inches. That, that matches the wood frame, wood frame construction manual, helps with the design, energy efficiency, and what have you. And it's quite typical that, you know, these overhangs, ebs, what have you, are a little bit larger than 12 inches and the way our code currently is constructed, I'm supposed to prohibit that or, you know, put setbacks to it. I don't think it really affects anything. So that's the first, that's A. B is a thing about chimneys. Many towns, municipalities, chimneys, the, if, if the house is, you know, 20 feet from a property line and the chimney bumps out because it's on the perimeter, it, it.
Hang on a second, Brett.
Yep.
This meeting is being recorded.
So in addition with the chimneys that might bump out of on the side of the house, the, the termination above the roof, there's a two-foot requirement to be above any combustible. So specifically, you know, a lot of our new homes, they, they, they go to the limit of the, the building heights. And this is, helps, you know, stay in compliance with the building code and not require there most to be lowered in height for the chimney. C has to do with, again, codifying what's currently interpreted. Front entry stairs, we don't count against building area lot coverage or setbacks. If you can think about a, a, a house that needs to be elevated, you know, I might have two or three steps, and then they make it FEMA compliant, it comes way up. And now you need 12, 15 steps, what have you, that's going to bump into the setback. So we typically just don't get into it. This would codify that interpretation. D is really the newer idea. We kind of talked about this again back in May, about some sort of allowance for smallish entry porches or covered porches. We have, you know, in the R2 and the R4 zoning district, we identified that there are smaller lots. They don't have room, and this would help with some architectural detail, make it a little more inviting to allow some sort of encroachment into that front yard setback really for, you know, for a portico or something to cover a stoop or what have you. Relatively minor, but to help with some, you know, the aesthetics and designing for, for houses. Again, at, at a request of a resident.
Now, you said, Tony Paskett did send some comments. You said you incorporated his, or addressed his comments in the draft?
So I guess.
Find the way it is right there. You can just leave it that way.
Okay.
So, yeah, I, there was a question, I, I think, Steve mentioned it too. Was there a desire to, you know, the five feet would be out from the face of the building? You know, there's a 50-foot setback, then that portico or smallish roof or flush would be, could be 45 feet from the property line. There was a question as, should you limit the width? I, I didn't really see the need to do that. We, we have an architecture review board. You know, it's, obviously, it's, it's up to the board what you're comfortable with. I just think that if we limit it based on some sort of number or percentage or, it becomes a bit arbitrary, and I, I think I'd rather keep it open to the, the architect and the ARB. One of the other comments was some of the verbiage on D, just making that more clear. So I would, I could still alter that before this would be put in form, but I didn't want to go crazy with it until you all had a chance to ruminate on it.
Yeah, the stairs, you don't count the stairs. And he was saying, maybe you want to consider a cap or a dimension. But, and then 20, is 24 inches above the height limit enough for a chimney by code?
Yep. Yeah, the uncovered stairs in the chimney, I believe I answered. I'm, I'm, those two, I think make sense. That's why we arrived at the 24 inches that's specifically for the code. And the uncovered stair, there was a question about landings being arbitrarily larger than need be. And that, again, we're already interpreting that where landing has a definition within the state code. If someone wants to make it a larger landing, it's looked at as a deck, and it has to meet all current setbacks. There's nothing, nothing new with the, with that, that section.
Yeah, that answered my question back because that's what I was thinking. All of a sudden, they make a wraparound stairway, make a big landing in there now, you know, now, now then five feet becomes 10 feet.
Right. The landing per building code, it's roughly the width of the opening. I'm going to say roughly because if you have a three-foot door and you went four foot wide, we're, we're okay with that. Out three feet. So you go out three feet, you can change direction. It's required on all exterior doors per fire code. If you have a long set of stairs for a very tall house, they, it's, if the run is more than 12 feet, you're required to have a landing to break that up. But that landing should be just the minimum that's required, the width of the stairs, out three feet, and then you have your landing. If someone makes a landing and makes a big deck there, that has to meet the setbacks. We're not, we're not proposing any sort of additional accommodation for that because we're, we're trying to get the development to the center of the lot. This, the, the new idea is really just the D about the, some first floor porches to give a little more flexibility.
Yeah, well, that was my point with the, the other thing with the, I think I sent you the, I don't know if you got my email or not, on it about the porches, fact that, you know, going out, the projection out is not that big of a problem than it is. As long as it doesn't all of a sudden becomes a covered porch, the whole length of the whole house, and, you know, increases everything on the house. And then before you know it, that gets proposed.
I think that was Tony's point, should we limit it so it's not the length of the whole house?
That's, that's my only question I'd like to do. That's the one thing that I would like to do. I'd like to see it based upon a, either a percentage or a square footage that it can't go, you know, exceed. either a percentage or a square footage, that it can't go, you know, exceed uh, a certain percentage of square, square footage. Uh, I don't have the numbers yet, um, but I think that uh, it might be. These are less for interpretation by everybody, and we now come up with a point that says, okay, you can have this, but you can only go so far, and then you have, after that, then you gotta go to zone, if you want a bigger.
I mean, I'm looking at the house across the street from Village Hall right now, and the porch is the size of the front of the house, and it doesn't look odd or oversized, so I don't, you know, that could, you would say that's 100%, the porch is 100% of the front of the house. So, but if you have, I don't know, what's the concern that the house might be?
It's a big difference in the R2 and R4 zones, though, residential zones and the business zone where you are. It makes a difference with the houses that are next door and in the surrounding areas, it can make a, make a big change in the neighborhood.
But if we said, what if we said it can't wrap around, you know, I mean, if, because most front porch, most front porches are the size of the front of the house, aren't they? They are where I grew up.
If they're the Really depends on the
Then their porch, if they're not the size of the front of the house, then I call them a stoop, but I'm not sure that.
I mean, we're not talking about a little portico, we're talking about a front porch, right?
And and an earlier version, um, I exempted uh, building area lot coverage, which I then removed in this, in this version, because it's still, we we're still gonna consider them for the the lot coverage, so you shouldn't, which is the 20%, and that's your building, all your accessory structures altogether, so they shouldn't allow for more, the potential, or it would help limit that worry that someone's going over the more than necessary, it's really just for some of the existing older houses where they're setback exactly 50 feet, and they wanted to have a little portico, and we had sent them for a variance, and they rather just, you know, eliminate the variance, but it it, you know, there's architectural reasons or a nice reason to have a little bit of a covered entry. Now, but I I understand the point, that could mean six feet, eight feet wide, or could be the whole width of the house. Um, I I don't, I don't like putting too much code into into these things, like a percentage or or footage, but if, you know, if the board, we can definitely take a look at some some examples and see if we uh, wanna.
With, with the way this is, Brad, is there a, a, someone prevented from putting one in their front porch, or whatever you want to call it, and a rear on the same house?
So this was specifically just for the front entry, uh, to help with the the view shed. Everything else on the side or the rear would still have to be in conformance with zoning, this was specifically for the front.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't, can't read that, but that's, okay.
Yeah, well, it it might have been a a early revision that wasn't clear, so this is the front with respect to the front yard setback, and also one story, so it, again, to break up the massing, if you allow for two stories, it's just gonna, you could still have this two-story mass. But yes, this is, this would be specifically just for the front entry, front porches.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to make sure, we're not talking about just limiting it to like a little covered entry, we're talking about a front porch where you could have, you know, couple rocking chairs, but we're limiting it to five feet, so it's not, you know, big structure, is that, isn't that what you were anticipating when you wrote this? Or were you thinking of a covered entry?
I was thinking of both, so again, it's really, it's the style of how, I mean, we have a bunch of different styles, obviously, there's the more traditional, or or like the house you mentioned across the street, that's like a early, uh, it's a 19 uh, 10s house or 1920s house, and it's very typical, those houses had a full porch in the front. But we also have very contemporary uh, houses where maybe they just have a small uh, roof over the front entry to help, again, break up the boxy appearance. Um, and then you have transitional houses, which are somewhere in between, they, you know, just a portion of it will be a porch, it's really, again, it I I totally get the fact that if we're gonna allow something and give it an extra allowance, we don't want it, you know, to give an inch and someone take a mile. But with all the different architectural ideas, and the fact that we also routed through the uh, the architecture review board for their review and input, and that you're still limited to the building area lot coverage, it shouldn't it shouldn't really allow for more building than they're supposed to, and if we don't lim, limit it to a certain um, size or percentage, then they, they still have that flexibility to to, you know, build the house that they want to build.
Mm-huh, I see your point, so it would apply to both, and it's still subject to ARB review and um, but that you you couldn't put a screen around it, right? When you say unenclosed, does that mean um, like a hard structure?
No, no screens, so so columns or 45, you know, brackets on a 45, or just uh, some some posts, but but not, not fully enclosed, not to have screens, not to be, because then it's, it just becomes building. This is uh, supposed to be inviting and and um, you know, quaint. Was to help the the feel of the character, not 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 to gain another uh, you know, some more enclosed area towards the street.
Got it. So I don't have any other questions. Do you think that you?
I think the concept is good, so uh, we can keep moving forward with a little brief discussion on if we want to go with uh, letting the ARB decide things as they go, and keeping the code simple, or if we want to add some percentages or square footage. Other than that, I think we're in good shape.
I think we leave it up to the ARB to go that way.
Schedule this for a public hearing for, you know, next month, and get some input from the community, and give ourselves a little more time to think about it and make comments. We're not deciding tonight.
Alright.
But thanks for your input, Brad, that's good stuff as usual.
Thanks, Brad, I think the, I think the principle is good, it's just um, you know, fine tuning, it'll be perfect.
Yeah, it's really just, it's it's a first, first crack at it, it was a, it was a suggestion, and uh, that's why we have, you know, that's why we have the the process and discussion, and we can tweak it until everyone's comfortable, so it's good, thank you.
Exactly. Alright, the next item on our agenda is uh, what we call the TOED application, which is the temporary open-air dining rules that we adopted when the pandemic started, if I recall correctly, New York State, you know, said that we could um, allow dining and tables and chairs on our sidewalks. Be, you know, and because it was prompted, because, you know, restaurants were at 50% capacity, now they're at 100% capacity, but this you know, the the governor's executive order is still in place, so we don't know how long it'll stay in place. So some of the trustees were interested in allowing the dining, you know, the expanded dining to continue. And making it an official seasonal application. So we would have two, we'd have, you know, the outdoor dining that we have now on the restaurant's property, and then Brad's created a, you know, revisions to the code that would make more permanent on a seasonal basis, dining on the right of way. So Brad, what, would you please um, describe what, what Liz put up? Is your thoughts?
Yeah, um, so I, I don't have that in front of me, Liz, can you, can you scroll down to the last section, the one, a a proposed 196 dash 4.1, these first bits are just pointing to our code never permitted, yeah, all on the right, thank you, our code never permitted any of this outdoor tables, chairs, dining, any of that in the village right away, probably for good reason, because uh, you know, um, concerns of maintenance and and safety and uh, alcohol use and all these other things. You know, obviously, the last couple of years, it's given you um, a trial run of seeing some of that seating, and some of our business owners, property owners, the building is right up on Main Street, and there is no land whatsoever, so um, you know, we kicked this around year ago, year and a half ago, um, what would it look like if you did want to uh, entertain uh, some use of the villages right away? Some other towns and villages have some sort of provision like this, you know, they'll, they'll give a certain on a square footage in front of their property. Um, I think uh, the the TOADS was was much looser, we, you know, the the state was relaxed with their rules. Um, I think if, you know, with this, you uh, it makes sense, if if it's gonna be on your right of way, it's it's really more representative of the village than anything, so um, again, this is just the first shot, there's a lot of ideas to to think about uh, within this, but um, so this is a little verbose, but talking about, you know, what what the ideas would be, what the limits would be, if you could just scroll down a little bit, um, Liz? You know, providing garbage and uh, umbrellas and not having roofed over structures, um, you know, indemnification, hold harmless uh, agreements, um, you know, uh, again, we, I think we tempt this up as a not not obstructing a four-foot wide section of concrete sidewalk, because that's what we ended up with on the TOED, but um, really just to kick it to the trustees and see how they feel about um, you know, allowing this more on a permanent nature, permanent though, tied to your seasonal uh, outdoor tables and chairs and benches uh, permits that you already do every year, which of course, you know, you can revoke if there's problems, you don't have to renew them every year, you still route it to the planning board like typical, but this was to add a section that would allow for some, some of it to be located on the right of way.
Yeah, and I for one liked, I liked it, you know, I got used to seeing it, and I think it makes the village look more lively and fun, and the people that did it were respectful of the space, you know, they, the restaurants did have, uh, they kept the for the most part, one lane clear for pedestrians, and um, so I like the idea, you know, as long as we don't have to police them in terms of the alcohol, they'll have to go get, you know, with the, with the COVID rules, it was fine, they didn't need special approval, but now they would probably need, you know, something from the SLA to be able to serve the alcohol outside their uh, premises, but you've written that in, I see.
I like the idea, I think it gives us a more hometown feel, feel, people feel more included, it's it's nice being outside, outdoors in the summer, and you know, it's nice.
Yeah, I, I
Yeah.
I I agree completely with what Mayor and Rob said. Um, first, Brad, thank you for putting the effort and thought into this. I think that, you know, COVID or not, this is a, this is a good thing for businesses. Uh, I think it's a good thing for the village, we have checks and balances, we can control it, we can monitor it, as Brad said, we can revoke permits if uh, people abuse the opportunity, but um, you know, even even with COVID uh, going away, hopefully. Um, you know, businesses need every opportunity that they can to to grow and and prosper, and our village, like Rob said, and and Mayor said, um, it 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 looks good, it's vibrant, that's what a downtown is, and if we can keep it safe um, and and um, you know, protect the village and help businesses, I I just think it's a win-win, I think we should go with it, and um, it looks like a lot of, you know, uh, precautions have been taken already, that we that we've thought of, and that's Brad included, so I'm all for it.
Brad, did you, is there anything in here about the heat lamps, or we don't need that because it's covered by the fire code?
Uh, we, I didn't put anything specific about the heat, again, uh, this sits in a section where it's really just the summertime, I know, I know the this, the the board has extended that uh, at their discretion for some, some of our uh, applicants, but it's that that normal uh, time period, so I didn't include anything about heat, I mean, we can absolutely add something uh, to that effect, it is covered by the fire code. Um, it's, it's generally, the temporary heating is always a problem, because the 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 most common way that it's handled is with uh, portable propane tanks, which cannot be stored inside buildings, and uh, there's also a permanent amount that you can have stored, uh, and a lot of these uh, property owners, vendors, and what have you, don't have a place to um, responsibly store them, uh, so that's always a a tip, you know, a worry when the season goes long. I mean, obviously, the last couple of years have been a little crazy, and we're trying, you you all tried everything you can do to extend the season. Um, maybe that won't be as necessary going forward, but um, but we can definitely, we can definitely include something about heat on here. I I just think it's, it's, it's more difficult, it's a bit messier, and it's a little more uh, complicated, especially with some of your property, because that could be a source of burning or fire or or catastrophe, and uh, you know, that that might be something you would want to uh, limit or restrict or condition with some of these sites. If they're gonna be on on the village property.
Not addressed yet in here as it stands now, right? I don't, I don't see.
It's not in there now.
I'm also not sure that, on that thought, that uh, if the season is extended, I would be in favor of installing the uh, bubbles or whatever you, the the, the structures around each table um, on village property, I I I think that would de- detract from the situation, so.
Yeah, and and number eight, we specifically talked about umbrellas and those movable shades of barriers, the movable barriers, you can call modesty screens or what have you, see some of our um, business owners use them. Uh, I know they kind of use them as like a sec- secondary means of advertisement, but they do kind of corral the space and make it easy to walk around, rather than tripping over a table leg. But specifically awnings retractable or otherwise, uh, should not extend onto the villages right away, I would, I would I would very much agree that anytime you enclose or cover it, it's got a completely different feel, and it's uh, you know, to be putting that on your property is, uh, I I, I think I could easily add, you know, bubbles or or any of those those types of uh, enclosures could be prohibited.
Like an enclosed structure, we could add that, that that makes good sense, because it, you know, we shouldn't have that on the sidewalk. Um, what about? This is, uh, this is a little more difficult, but most of the people that had those modesty screens or barriers, they were very tasteful and looked good, and then, you know, sometimes you might have somebody that's got one that's not, or the the way their seating is, and the you know, maybe we could limit it to, I don't know how you would limit it, but um.
Yeah, so the the designs.
We we could limit it by having the planning, referring it to the planning board, and that it has to be in their plan that the planning board looks at and makes a recommendation.
Yeah, we could limit the the, yes, and we can limit the amount of colors used, we could limit signage within those barriers, um, and we have, um, not not to cast shade at anyone, but we do have a a one outdoor seating plan with its, everything's multicolored. And, you know, that might be fine, or it might be not fine, that, it's like, it's something to definitely think about, if if we want to try to make it a little more uniform, or have some sort of stag, style guidelines or limits, it would still get referred to the planning board, and of course, the board is able to um, you know, approve or deny or or alter as well, because it's ultimately, it's it's within your property, and the first uh, subsection of this proposed um, code amendment, it says you can impose any conditions you'd like, so obviously, you all being uh, comfortable or happy with the appearance of it, is a big part of it, we want, we want the the downtown and the village to look like downtown and the village, and not not take on a, you know, uh, not not change uh, with this.
We, yes, we want to maintain the uh, open air character of the whole situation, because as everyone, all the others, with the mayor and Rob and Brian all said, it was very much appreciated and attractive, and I, I didn't hear one person complaining about it. So uh, it was very positive.
So this doesn't go necessarily go to the planning board, though, the TOED applications didn't go to the planning board, and then if it's a renewal, just goes to the trustees. Just as a, an aside, because I I don't think it would go to the planning board unless it's an initial application, but all these have already been in place, so maybe we do need to come up with some kind of a guideline with respect to colors or style or something. in place, so maybe we do need to come up with some kind of a guideline with respect to colors or style or something. I don't know how we would do that.
The this proposed subsection would not codify the toads. It's really it's it's tied back into your temporary outdoor dining tables and chairs permit, so um they would have to amend that current plan if they have it. Um, it would come before you like an initial application, which you would refer to the planning board. That's how it's set up right now.
Oh, okay.
I understand it's it's a maybe a little bit more of a heavy lift for the first year, but once it's once you go through that initial approval process, it would be very much like the renewal process going there forward, but that's how this was conceived, because we also want to make sure we're taking insurances and and if there is a uh an S L A component, we want to make sure that that is sorted out to our satisfaction before we uh you know, permit this. The toes was quite loose, and I think, you know, the the governing laws allowed that, but I I don't know that um outside of the state emergency, uh if we can just the word is uh make those permanent, this this would really be about amending or adding your new, your your outdoors tables and chairs permit.
Okay.
And it would be subject to Health Department approval too. I mean, we can't have the outdoor tables and chairs out year round, because then that's expanding the seating of the allowed seating by the Health Department, correct?
Well, this isn't year round, is it, Brad?
Yes, but wouldn't, isn't there a uh a limit to the seasonal dining that's under the Health Department?
Yeah, there's a couple of ways to do it with the Health Department, right? If you can either take your you could take a seat from seat table from outside and from inside, put it outside, and and they're okay with that without any further approval. Um, if you, if they want some sort of uh permanent, I'm going to call it permanent seasonal seating, which sounds um like an oxymoron, maybe. Long, yeah, long term outdoor seating, um if you're approved for sixteen seats and you want to have four permanent outdoor seats, uh seasonal outdoor seats, uh that that should reduce your indoor in the off season, but I I, the Health Department has been in flux in the last couple of years with with all this, so um just to cover ourselves, I put it in the within here that they shouldn't they should be obtaining those approvals as necessary and providing proof to us. I I'm not a hundred percent sure on how they're gonna uh look at, look at it, though, at this point.
That's going to be my issue with the whole thing. The Health Department and the S L A are going to start, because they're no longer going to say this is COVID related. This is permanent, and they're going to start have a feeling they're going to get involved in it very heavily. And I think it's going to be a problem sooner or later down the road, so we better very careful as to what we allow than what we do. I'm not against it, it's just we got to make sure that we do it right.
Okay, well, you know what, Brad, why don't we, you know, we can uh or we can incorporate, you could incorporate some of these comments, we can talk about it a little more, send it around to the trustees for additional comments, and then at some point, schedule public hearing.
Yeah, and I could reach out to Food Control if we'd like to and see how they want to deal with it, because I know that that changed from the start of COVID to the end of COVID, that how they viewed these things was different. It used to be you would need some sort of approval to put seats outside, but then um this year or in the last several months, it's been, if they take a seat from inside and put it outside, they don't want to hear, they're fine, they don't, they don't care. Um, so that that that's been moving around, but yeah, absolutely, well.
Not really what we're talking about.
Yeah, I know, um.
We have, we have some places that were, their outside seating was double or more than their approved inside seating. They're approved for so much and their outside seating ended up going like a third over that. So then it becomes a Health Department issue, wait a minute, they're approved for X amount of number, we're making them, you know, double that.
Brad, sorry, didn't hear, um, with the S L A, uh because it's on municipal property, we need to grant the S L A permission to um actually, I guess supervise those areas or, you know, whatever, they enforce those areas. Okay, yeah, from my understanding, I think it's like municipal form or extension form or something to that effect, um.
Yes, yeah, I think you're right, and I think uh it 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 again after COVID, who knows, but it had always been something you could amend your S L A for, um to have some seating out in front on the public sidewalk. Uh, but it it, I'm pretty sure that you're right, they would have to amend their S L A approval, and we should probably retain a copy of that to make sure that we're we're not running afoul of of the state. Um, I don't think they have a problem with it, other than they have to apply uh and their S L A permit has to to show that with a little sketch or what have you.
That was just something that dawned on me while we were talking about, I saw this line eight or nine there, something about the S L A, and I thought about it.
The other thing the S L A is going to do is one of the things is most likely going to make it be a enclosed, not enclosed, but a defined area that you have to limit it to. And we have places that kind of just put out chairs and it kind of expanded, and then all of a sudden, before we know it, they were in the pavers. Um, drinking a beer that was from the restaurant. That's not going to be permitted, we're going to have to, that's where we're going to get back to the barriers around that we were talking about earlier. They're going to end up coming into effect, so do we want to put barriers in and just leave it? Say, oh, can't expand beyond your barrier, and that's going to be the end of it. Uh, and then that makes it a lot easier for the S L A. Otherwise, like everybody else, everybody be given so much, and then they have to take, you know, ten yards more.
Yeah, I haven't really looked at this in almost a year now, so I'll I'll, I'd like to take some of the comments, beef this up, tweak some things, uh I can definitely, I'll reach out to uh the S L A and Food Control and and see if they have any recommendations or see, uh, you know, that we're not making sure we're not barking up the wrong trees.
Sounds good, Brad, hard work.
Sounds good. Thanks, Brad.
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you, Brad.
Okay, uh, yeah, and thanks, everybody, for your input. You know, these are things we got to talk about and work through and come to reasonable solutions like we usually do. Next item is the seasonal rental. Um, we had a little presentation from um Tony Haskett, our last work session, and and Beth and Steve were involved and um you know, a- after that, I had a an East End supervisors and mayor's meeting, and Fred Thiel attended, and he said that we could either file a local law, this was, this is uh with respect to the the seasonal rentals. New York passed a law that you could not get more than one month's um upfront for security. And that doesn't work for, you know, the homeowners out here that rent for three months. So they actually changed the law at Fred's urging, and um now if it's for a hundred twenty days or less, you can get the money upfront, but the municipality has to have a rental registry, where we have to have a copy of the lease on file. So we thought that meant we had to have a local law, but somebody meant Thiel said you could do it that way, or you could do it administratively um by passing a resolution directing the building department to collect the leases, so that might be a nice you know, a little bit more of a streamlined process just to get this done, especially since, you know, it's March already, um. So um I mean, I I know we're we're all in agreement that we should do it to give some relief to the homeowners that are renting. And um
Well, the streamlined approach is always going to be a lot easier to to handle and control, you know, we don't want to need to overcomplicate all these situations, because then they put so much extra pressure on the building department, A R B, and everybody else with this, so I think we keep it streamlined. I think we're so much far ahead.
Yeah.
Hey, Mayor, did uh, did did Fred give you any idea of how to do that? I just got the impression that it had to be done by local law.
Yeah, well, it's funny, because he said the thing, he said that, but then the thing he sent was the Sagaponics uh seasonal rental law, they, the public notice where they were changing it to say the dwelling units more than a hundred and twenty days don't qualify as a seasonal rental. But um I noticed that in the chart, the very thorough chart that Beth from your office created in Quog, they did it that way, that they um the landlords required to file a copy of the lease and um it's a hundred and twenty day maximum to get on the seasonal use registry, so maybe we can check in with them as to what they did and just do the same and not make, I know there's a lot of other issues involved that we were talking about in terms of you know, special event permits and people renting out their properties for weddings, and what does that mean, is that commercial use, but you know, we, and we do need to talk about all that, but for right now, we need to resolve this rental registry matter because the um realtors are already calling that their clients want to sign leases. And, you know, what can we do?
Even if if you want to do something simple, even if we have to do it by local law, we could probably do something with just a registry and filing of leases the same way you could do a resolution, have a public hearing at the next meeting if you wanted to. You know, if if you streamline it, I mean, we sent out that questionnaire. There's a whole bunch of things you can regulate when it comes to seasonal rentals, but we don't have to do that. We could do either a, if an an administrative, I have to look into that, or a stripped down temporary local law until we figure out exactly what we want to do that would solve this purpose.
Yeah, because I know that, you know, um we, none of us thought that that would be adequate to just do a resolution directing the building department, and then when he said it, I thought, oh, okay, this is news to us, so it's an easier way to do it, but we have to look into that, and if if not, then we can always do the local laws you're suggesting. You know, have a public hearing.
I mean, I, we have to do this, I have to do the summer rental permits anyway. So, I mean, I can, I can tweak my application, send it to our legal team and see if um if I can hit all the notes that would be in compliance with the law, and that might be the path of least resistance, um that's
And then we would pass a resolution to authorize you to do that.
Right, so I changed my, changed my application to say I need a copy of the lease and you also have to, like, probably, and it'd have to attest that they're not going to rent in more than a hundred twenty days or whatever conditions are in that law. I'm sure we could get that in the in the application.
Yeah. And then they should feel free to redact certain things if they didn't want the dollar amount. But that's up to them, I guess, we don't have to put that in the.
Our summer rental law, the multiple res- rent, I'm just looking for the code now, um it's, I actually says it's, it the the, they're not subject to foil, I don't know if that's legit or not, but uh that's in our code, that they're not subject to foil, so but yeah, like telling people to black out the 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 dollar amounts is, I I I don't, we don't need to know that information, we just need to know who it is and how long they're going to be there, right?
Yeah.
The only question I have is the hundred and twenty days. Would that cover from really the the standard, you know, full time, full seasonal rental was from Memorial Day to Labor Day? Does that exceed a hundred twenty days sometimes?
What were you saying?
It wouldn't, no, Memorial Day to Labor Day wouldn't exceed a hundred and twenty days, I don't think. Because it's three months and and a, and max another two weeks.
Two weeks, so, so you're talking around a hundred days then, most likely.
Yeah, and even if it's a week before Memorial Day, you're probably within the hundred twenty days.
I was, I was just thinking about that, I didn't, I didn't do the figuring in my head, but I just want to make sure that, you know. As as Steve, as you know, that's the standard, you know, the the standards law and.
Yeah, well, usually, like, it's usually a few days before Memorial Day or Memorial Day and then a little bit after Labor Day. But uh, I think you could fit it in.
But not be, not go beyond that, which is fine, that's fine.
And if the people are smart enough, they will make sure their lease is a hundred and nineteen days, no matter what they tell their tenants.
Yeah, yeah, and just the New York State thought anything more than a hundred twenty days is not seasonal, so that falls into the full time category.
Yeah, we do, I mean, we talked, talked, talked about this briefly, but we're still talking about single family homes, so they should, they should have permanent occupancy for preponderance of the year, it shouldn't be rented rented upon, rented upon, rented upon, because that's, that's in, could be in contravention of their their C O.
You probably need to, need to have the application form have a requirement that they produce the C O. You don't really want to uh allow people to take advantage of this if they have a potentially illegal dwelling, you know?
Well, that makes me think of something else now, so now I'm thinking maybe we should just do a resolution based on Brad's marked up application directing him to take the leases, right? If it's not a hundred and twenty days or less. But then, we'll still be working on a local law to codify that, but we need to have the local law talk about inspections, because now, you know, should we you know, some people, I think, I am, I'm one of them, think that the property, you know, even if it's every two years or three years, should get inspected before they're allowed to have a seasonal rental, just to make sure the pool enclosures are in working order and, you know, anything else that needs to get checked on. So that's something that would be different, that would change the fee, I think, of course, that uh is paid for it and um so, you know, this is other things we need to address in a broader scope. So let's try to do this first little step administratively.
Yeah, that would be good, then we could study it more carefully.
Yeah, that, that's my point, I think, maybe, you're right, Murray, I think we should take it one step at a time, there's a lot more that has to be done to this eventually down the road, but let's at least get this first port set for this summer, which I think we can do just administratively.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
I agree.
So Brad, you're going to prepare a, like a bullet point list and send it over to Tony and me?
I I am going to prepare a draft amended uh application. Because my application for my summer rental already hits on a bu- a bunch of these things, so I'm going to add the um
Copy the lease requirement, test, test station.
Right, about the hundred twenty days, this way we can touch on those components of that, that uh, that law. And then uh if you're all good with that, we can then you know, put that before the board as a resolution to be like, hey, this is the the new application going forward, and then we can change the code down the road.
Okay, good.
Excellent.
Well, give me something to do.
I know, you just don't have enough, right? Okay, the next thing on the agenda is, now, this was something that um Brian mentioned, Brian, I don't know if you're prepared to talk about it tonight, I see Kyle's not here, but I know there was some discussion about the um a facade easement for the movie theater.
Um, yeah, Kyle and I had uh had talked about it, the the thing is that I, I'm not familiar with who the buyers are. I've heard that it closed yesterday. Um, and Kyle and I had been thinking that um you know, just like the Sag Harbor Theater had done, uh there is C P F funding for uh facade easement for uh things like that that we think could be available for the movie theater, I'd love to, and Kyle would, and I think a lot of people around here would love to see it remain a movie theater or something similar to that, something that the community benefits from, again, as always, realizing that a business has to be viable, so you know, it, I'd love to see uh a bowling alley, an indoor swimming pool, a movie theater and a bunch of other things, but um you know, if they can't sustain themselves, then I understand that, but um on that note, any ways that uh that a property owner, a business owner could be uh helped or benefited by creative thinking like that uh to make it viable business wise, um I think there's um and this is Kyle's idea too, so, you know, I'm just speaking more on his behalf, but um opportunity to um you know, to to help a business um revitalize a the the a use like movie theater with possibly a bar, a restaurant, or both, or things like that, so um you know, I think it's probably on pause until we find out who the 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 buyer is and what their intentions are, but if they're in, or if their intentions are to do something like that, we think there's good opportunity to help out.
Let's hope that is their intention, it would be great to have something like that. Let's hope that is their intention, it would be great to have something like that.
Yeah, I agree.
Hey, Brian, do you know what what the a facade easement entails? I mean, it's just by its word, it means that. The property owner would just give you, give the municipality in some form. Some sort of commitment to maintain the look of the front of the theater, is that it?
Yeah, I think so, Steve, it's the the best I understand it, um, you know, again, this is.
I don't see how that makes a difference to what the use is, it's just. I I I I'm not familiar with what with. With what, what the terms of it are.
Yeah.
I think that's what, well, I think that's what was done with the Sag Harbor Theater after the fire somehow or and the restoration. And there, and then the uh, that property became eligible for CPF funds. Because of the facade easement, whatever that means.
Oh, I see, I see.
Correct.
So this easement is one thing, but it really is just a mechanism to get into the CPF money.
Precisely.
Okay, okay.
Yep, yeah, and Kyle, um, when he's available can speak to it in more detail, he's very familiar with it, but. Uh, yeah, that's, that's the, that's the essence of it, it's a, it's more of a mechanism uh to funding.
And it would be, would have to be something that the new owner is interested in, if they're not interested in that, we get, we can't really force it on them.
No, we can't, because we don't have any landmarking or uh, that authority, you know? So I was trying to figure out what's the purpose of it, why would a landowner want to do something like that, tie his hands? Well, I understand, okay.
So the, and the reason it came about, Steve, is that when the theater was for sale, there were a few interested buyers. That were actually interested in this concept, so it kind of came up. Based on willing participants, but. Now it's been purchased by someone that we haven't had that conversation with, so yeah, we're talking theoretically. Uh, depending on what their intentions are, um, we don't know them, so I, I don't um. Yeah, I don't want to get too far into it because I'm, I'm not one to, you know, impose on, on a property owner, but. Um, discussing it is, is good so that if. They have interest in it, that we can kind of help guide them and facilitate, if not, you know, it's, it's understood.
Okay, I just, I just didn't understand how it would work, didn't, I never, I didn't think, you know, the idea of a. Private owner voluntarily limiting the look of their building. Didn't make much sense to me, but now I understand it, it's, it's like a key.
It's like a historic thing, because we have a photo of the original building. Right here in Village Hall, and that's where the original Village Hall was housed. Is in that building back in the nineteen twenty, whatever it is, six, eight, whatever. So there's, there's a picture of the facade and it is stucco with large windows and had the Village Hall. Uh, imprinted on the glass and picture of the new trustees and mayor and so on.
Yeah, and and I mean, it literally could be the difference between. Uh, making the numbers work on the property and not, so it's just something, you know, that's. That's a possible available tool.
Okay.
You certainly wouldn't want to keep the existing facade though. That is not good looking. Sorry, but it isn't. All right, well then, to be continued, Brian.
Yes.
On that one. All right, the last item is a use of village property application, Liz said, uh, we have one from the chamber for some sidewalk sales. So um, I don't have that in front of me, um. What are they proposing?
Do we know, I, I haven't seen this either, is it the same number of sidewalk sales they traditionally do, same? General dates? Do we know?
Is it just one?
Yes, um, there, they want to have one in April, um, April. Um, April, April thirtieth, Saturday and Sunday, April thirtieth and May first. The same as in the past that we've granted them. And then they want to have another one, September twenty fourth and twenty fifth. Then October first and second. And October eighth and tenth, eight through the tenth, the Columbus Day weekend.
Ooh, that's a lot.
Yeah, the same as in the past, um, they said they want uh. Sidewalk sale merchandise, number of racks to be determined by the village. Suggested two to three eight foot racks and or one six foot table. All racks to be placed up against storefront and are placed in pavers to ensure sidewalk is not obstructed.
Well, that's what we told them last time.
Right, right.
Right.
I know some of the merchants like to have them because they think it brings people in and they get to sell, you know, have sale items outside. And then some of them, or at least one of them, has said to me, you know, her clients don't like it because it looks. Well, she didn't think it looked good to have the clothing racks out so many weekends, so. I mean.
We did encounter another problem with the chambers before. And it, it has to do with code enforcement and. The number of vendors or businesses that are a member of the chamber and. They qualify under the chambers insurance and so forth in the chambers application. But other non-participating people or businesses keep putting stuff out on these weekends. And it's, I don't know, it's. What, we have, have to have some way to enforce that. The chamber has the umbrella of the application and. But we are responsible for code enforcement or any other errant. Uh, displays or whatever you want to call them. I would think somehow, we did, we did have encountered that issue before. So we'd have to get a list of participating businesses from the chamber to do anything with that.
I don't know if we do that, to say that, you know, store A, because they're a member of the chamber and store B's not a member of the chamber, you can't use our sidewalk. I think we, you know, a bit of a problem.
I, no, I think, I think we actually can, we're granting the permission to the chamber. To use the sidewalk for the people under their umbrella, and I think it's, I think, I, I agree, Ralph, I think it's. Wrong for, you know, for us to not enforce. Uh, people who aren't part of that application. To, to do the same thing, it's, it's, you know, it's kind of the whole point of the application.
Having an art show and then all of a sudden other vendors start showing up that they didn't anticipate or. Or plan for or whatever and just parking themselves. In the vicinity, I, I don't know.
I think it should rest on the shoulders of the chamber. To report to code enforcement to say there's. Someone doing, I mean, if, you know, it's got to be based on a report to code enforcement, I don't think we should be responsible for patrolling. Per se, but my opinion is that. The chamber, because it's their application, should say there's someone doing this, it's not part of our application, we want to notify you of this.
But we did have.
What, have code enforcement officer work that Saturday, those Saturdays, and then what would he have to do? If they refuse to take their racks and give them a ticket?
Yeah, I think it should be the same process as if there was no sidewalk sale. And some store decides to just go out in this, in, on the sidewalk and display their stuff. That's the same process, right, wouldn't we? If someone notified us of that, to say such and such store. You know, is, is doing this, then wouldn't we be responsible to respond?
Yeah, Brad, what would we do, I don't know if Brad's still on, but you know, if.
Yeah, Mayor, I should, I'm not a hundred percent sure that you can open up the village to just. Sidewalk sales for stores that participate in the chamber. I've got to think about.
Well, that's not what we're saying, we're saying that the chamber is applying to have a sidewalk sale for its members and they'll. They would give us a list of those members.
And I guess you have, well, you'd have to have like a mi- an application by each of the individuals. And make it open to everybody, I don't know how you do it that way, you know, just this. I've got to think about that. Cause it's, it's not quite the same as what Ralph was talking about, because the, the art show is in a defined area. Um, they would have to almost like break in a trespass, they're, you're talking about individual stores with the same access to the street. I don't know.
The defined area wouldn't be the sidewalks in the B one, I don't, I, I'm just.
Well, the sidewalks in the B one, but there would be people in the B one. Who are not participating in the, in the. Chamber application, who might, may want to take advantage of the sidewalk sale opportunity.
So what's the point of the application?
So then we should mem- maybe amend it and let the chamber know that their application. Is really opening the, the entire B one up for a sidewalk sale, whether they're a member or not, we should convey that to them that.
I guess you, you could, Ralph, you.
Go ahead, Steve, sorry.
Yeah, you, you could, you could open it up to the individuals and have the, have. Each individual store have to make an application, but it seems like a blanket. A blanket application. By the chamber that excludes people from that opportunity, you'd have to give another op. I think you'd have to give an opportunity to the other, other members who are not part of the chamber to uh, make application.
Okay, and they would be.
Everybody.
For insurance and all the other things that the.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think you'd have to, but I, it just seems to me that uh. We have to think it through, if we're just going to uh, just. Approve for, approve the chamber and then say nobody else can do it.
How does it work, how does it work then? You know, when you have a street fair and an organization applies for a permit to use the street. And then they control who's part of that as vendors. Seems very similar to me.
Well, it may be similar, except that we're opening up the sidewalk in B one. And we're just, you know, theoretically discriminating against some. Um, it seems to me it's got to be open to everybody, I guess if we license the street. Uh, could be treated differently, I've got to think it through, Brian, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Okay, you could, if we're concerned with. Protecting the, sorry, go ahead.
Uh, Brian, when we do the street fair, that's something that the. Um, is controlled by the chamber, they go in and they control as to who they, you have to pay in order to get in, to use it, we're just. The only thing is the village is doing, saying is, you're allowed to use the street. For a fair, that's it, I mean, it's simple. The only thing we're doing now is saying you're using, you're allowed to use the sidewalk for, for your clothing thing, clothing racks. That's it, we can't, I don't think we can say, you know, from one store to the other, that, no, you can't do it. Um, because they're, they're going using public property, they're, they're a taxpayer, the same as everybody else is. We can't get bothered in the chambers portion of it.
You can put conditions on it and uh, you know, the chamber could supply blanket insurance for its members. But I think you'd have to make it available to the others, but again, I have to think about this a little bit.
Well, okay, so, so making it available to the others, just playing devil's advocate, would be. That you either pay to be a member of the chamber.
No, we can't do.
Wait, no, I'm talking about the chamber.
Yeah.
I'm not talking about us, so, so they either, a business either pays the chamber. To set up a booth on the street when they have a street fair. Or they pay the chamber a membership to be able to be part of their event, I don't see any difference between those two.
Well, uh, here's what I think is happening. The members of the chamber pay an annual dues, but that doesn't cover the sidewalk sales. When there's a sidewalk sale, the chamber puts in the application and they put in their insurance and they pay the village a hundred fifty dollars. And then they charge each of the. Property owners, I mean, the, the merchants, an additional fee, maybe they're getting a hundred, hundred fifty dollars. You know, for the weekend from each of the, the merchants. So their point is, well, if you let somebody sell clothing that didn't pay us the fee. Maybe nobody will pay us the fee next time, or half of them won't, and we won't get the money that we want to make. I don't know, that's part of, I'm sure what the problem is.
Right, and that's, that's what I'm seeing, parallel to a street fair where some guy just comes and sets up his hot dog truck. On Main Street. And he's not part of the event, I. That's just like so, a store putting their merchandise out, that's not part of the event, to me.
But if, if, Brian, if somebody did that, we wouldn't have. Matter because we don't have a say as to who can go in there or not, we don't have the say on that portion of the thing. And we're not the collection agency for this chamber of commerce, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but what if the chamber came to us on the day of the Harvest Festival and said, hey, this, this, you know. Food truck is not allowed to be here, they didn't pay, they're not on the list, you have to ask them to leave, chief.
Right, and we're the ones. We can't tell them to. Granting the permit, though.
We're bringing, aren't we good in that, in that street fair thing, aren't we granting the permit to the chamber, don't they have to police it themselves? Our police can't, can't police a private individual, I mean, if that person is, is. Breaking the law, the police can do something about it.
That's exactly what I'm saying, Steve, we're not policing it, but if they report it as a violation. Of their application to a permit to us. Then that's when we react. In either scenario.
Yeah, well, I'm okay with, I'm theoretically, you're right, except that what I'm saying is. We can't simply say that only people who are part of the. Uh, chamber can take advantage of us opening up the sidewalk. If they meet whatever criteria we impose, like insurance and location of equip of. Sale items, uh, I, I don't know how we can give the uh, chamber. Notwithstanding what we're talking about with your example, I just don't see how we can give them a monopoly. If other people can meet the same criteria that they meet.
Well, that's a different story, you know, the individual shops are not going to give us insurance, the, the one, the other ones are covered by the chambers insurance, so if. If, if, if somebody who's not covered wants to give us insurance, sure, they can be out there.
Right, right. I think we have to do it that way.
That's exactly right, Mayor, yes.
I, yeah, I also. I also don't want to end up having a sidewalk sale every weekend, just because one particular business owner wants to have one, one weekend. And then another separate business owner wants to have another one, another weekend, and then the chamber wants to have one on their weekends. I don't want to have, i- is there some way we can limit? This, so it's not in every weekend occurrence?
That's a really good point.
Yeah, that's a good point, we probably can, I mean, we can do all those things.
I think you could, in a sense, instead of having the chamber commerce run it, you could do a village sponsored sidewalk sale. That these applicants would have to provide insurance to the village, and you could set two or three dates throughout the year that the village has a sponsored sidewalk sale.
And as a practical matter, the uh, the joining the. The chamber will be much cheaper for everybody, because they don't have to go out and get a uh. Sure, certificate, and then ride around their policy. But that may solve the problem that I'm concerned about, because I, I hate the idea of just making it exclusive to a private organization. And not giving other people, though maybe burdensome for them to join individually. Uh, nevertheless, we, I think we have to give them that right. To use it along with everybody else.
And maybe we can just limit.
Idea is a good one.
Limit any of these sidewalk sale applications to the weekends the chamber has requested. And then anybody.
Or less, or less.
Or less, right.
I would like to eliminate the first one in October, because that's three weekends in a row that we're going to have sidewalk sales, you know. One in April, one in September, one in October, that seems more reasonable to me than two in October. Unless, you know, do anybody ever have any thoughts on that?
I agree, I could have the same thought, you just beat me to it, I think they were asking for too many.
Too many.
It's three weeks in a row.
Yeah, plus it's going to cost the village, we should, should enforce this, especially the first couple of years, so we will have to have code enforcement. Around a certain amount.
Keep in mind, Columbus Day weekend is usually when we have uh, post-Harvest Festival as well. So anything going on on Main Street and Columbus Day weekend is going to add on that.
We have the art shows, there's an art show, Chambers having their art show Columbus Day weekend.
Yeah, so the whole village. Yeah, so the whole village is going to be active that weekend. I think we did it last year too. We said no to one of them and just let them have three.
Relimited them last year. Just.
Don't we do it again?
One in the, one in the spring and one in the fall.
Sounds good.
Yeah, and I, I, I really like where we're going with the village okaying that for anyone, the chamber can host it and have people that are members under their umbrella insurance or someone else can do it on their own. I just want to make sure, you know, that it's all up to par. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah. They always come up with a good solution.
Hey, Matt, you're a lot smarter than you look.
It's all fake. I just have somebody talking in my ear.
Yeah.
Don't mind the man behind here.
Anybody else have anything? Anyone in the uh, audience have a comment? Raise your hand. Liz can let you in. Okay, so that looks like it's it. I want to thank uh, Steve Brano for popping in tonight. I know you're not home and you've got a lot going on, so please give our best to Jeffrey.
Hmm.
Yes.
Yes. Hi, Jeff.
He's in here doing fine, laying in bed. You know, his meds, so he's in la la land.
Oh, good. Wake up and think, what was I dreaming about sidewalk sale?
It's a nightmare.
Oh, yeah, that was a dream.
Yes. All right, gang. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.
Night.